This evening, it's what, four minutes after seven. This evening, we have Chris Smith, Ken Edwards, and Frank Baba, our newest member of the team, and myself, Mark Travella, the chairman. This meeting tonight, the city of Torrington is hosting attorney Dory Famagletti, and she will be doing a presentation targeting ZBA members in the greater Torrington area. Attorney Famagletti will be giving an hour-long overview of the functions of zoning board of appeals, variances, legal requisites for hardship, including issues of confiscation and self-created hardships, other statutory duties of the ZBA, and hearing procedures, all of which I'm really interested in hearing about. So thank you for being with us this evening. Gentlemen, we do have one order of business. I would like to have a motion to approve the minutes of February 12th of this year.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
A second.
Thank you, Chris, and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Thank you very much. And without further ado, Dory, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can you pick me up okay? Can you hear?
Yes.
Super. Hi, thank you everyone for coming. Hello on the screen to everyone who's there and to my back. I'm Dory Famagletti. I'm a land use attorney at Kahon-Kurinsky &amp; Capicello, which is a law firm in Vernon. I've been practicing there for almost 28 years. I practice primarily land use. I also do some commercial and residential real estate. It's a general practice firm. We have other departments who do other things, but this is kind of in the area that I've landed and stayed at, and I really enjoy it. I do mostly work with applicants and developers before boards and commissions. I do serve as town attorney in the town of Ellington, so I don't obviously represent before boards there, but it is kind of nice. It gives me a chance to see things from your side, a different perspective. I like to think we're all on the same side, but sometimes, you know, our interests might not always align. But it's nice to see some things from the other side of the table. So I've been talking and lecturing for a number of years on ZBAs for the bar association, and the materials you have tonight are from one of my prior presentations. I'm going to just say, I'm sorry, I didn't send you the latest version. I just realized that me after, as I was preparing and going through everything today, said, oh, this outline looks a little different than the latest one I have. Most of the content is similar. There's been some updates. I've reorganized a few things, but most of it's in there. So if I'm jumping around, it's because I'm sorry, I've changed things a little bit since I sent you that draft.
And Dory, would it be okay if I circulated, if you get me an updated version, I can circulate it?
I'm happy to do that. I can send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll just circulate it through your agent, yep.
Okay. So with that, I guess I'll get right into it. So I don't know how long all of you have been members on the ZBA. I know we have one planning and zoning member here as well. You might not find all of this relevant, but maybe some of the procedures at least you'll find interesting. So I don't know, again, how long you've all been serving on the board, but I'm going to presume you've got some familiarity with it. Statutorily, a zoning board of appeals is required in every town that has a zoning commission. That's most of the towns in the state of Connecticut. I think there's very few exceptions. There's maybe two that don't have zoning commissions. You know, you have five regular members and three alternates. It's important to have a full panel if you can. I know it's hard to get volunteers, and the reason I say that is because, as you know, many of the things you have to vote on, most of the things you have to vote on require four or five votes. So if you're short members, it makes it really hard on an applicant to have a successful application. And statutorily, actually, if there is an absentee member on the board, you are required to seat an alternate as long as there's one present and available. I've been before other commissions, not ZBAs, but I was recently in front of a historic properties commission who had an alternate, but they didn't want to seat them for some reason. And that's just a disadvantage and unfair to an applicant, and we worked through that. But there is a statutory provision requiring that alternates be seated, especially again, like I said, when you need a heightened vote of four or five. So let's get right into it. There are three things typically that you're looking at when you're on a ZBA. You are here to decide appeals of orders made by your CEO, your zoning enforcement agent. You are here to hear variance applications, and sometimes you will hear applications for a special exception. That's if the regulations specifically designate the ZBA as the board in town to review special exceptions. I don't know, I didn't check Nate, what your regulations do. I'm assuming like most towns, they reserve that for the planning and zoning commission?
Yep, planning and zoning does that. We just do, yeah, variances, CEO appeals, and now we don't have location approvals, so we have a lot less.
You don't, you know what, we're going to talk about that. You don't have location approvals for repairs. You do still for gas stations and for motor vehicle recycle yards.
Right, correct.
Right. So, but you probably don't see too many of those. Maybe more gas stations, but. So briefly, we'll talk first about appeals, appeals of orders of the CEO, and those appeals have to be made to the ZBA if there's an order or a decision of your zoning enforcement officer. They appeal to you, and then you hear, you have to hold a public hearing on it, and we'll talk about the procedures of the public hearing as we get further into the dialogue. But when you have these matters come before you, any appeal, you have very, very broad discretion. You are basically sit de novo. You're like a court hearing it for the first time. You do not have to give any special deference to your CEO. You are a finder of fact. You are charged with finding substantial evidence in favor of the order or against the order. So you have to have a fact-finding mission during these hearing procedures. Again, you have to make a very individualized assessment. You cannot just rubber stamp. I know we all love our CEOs, but we can't just rubber stamp them and assume that they're always doing the right thing. We have to have a full hearing on it and hear all the evidence presented. Let's see. There's one thing that's interesting. The ZBA does not have the power to hear an appeal from a CEO's alleged failure to act. So let's say someone makes a complaint to the zoning office and Nate decides, oh, there's nothing really worth looking into here. I don't think there's a violation. He does nothing with the complaint. That can't be appealed to you. In those instances, a failure to act or non-action, the only thing an applicant, not an applicant, the only thing a reviewer could do is then perhaps bring a request for a mandamus, which is an order, so ordering Nate to make a decision, but he can't assume that failure to act was an actual affirmative decision to which could be applied. And I cite some cases in here to that extent. But when there is an affirmative decision and an appeal is taken, you have a mandatory duty to hold the hearing. You don't have the option to do so. You can't say, oh, this sounds familiar, or something like we already heard and disposed of, and the chair can't unilaterally decide, we're not going to hear this. It has to be a full public hearing, the whole board convene and hear that application. It's a mandatory duty. And we talked, I said already a little bit, that when you do have your fact-finding and when you do have an appellant, that's not really an applicant here because they're taking an appeal, when you have an appellant come before you to state their position as to why they think the order is perhaps not correct, you have to rely on facts, actual facts. You can't have speculative reasons. Oh, I'm worried it's going to be, you know, a problem. And this goes for variances too. So so often you hear people's against it. Oh, I'm worried it's going to be too noisy. They're going to be, it's going to be a problem, you know, with my neighbor, and I just don't like it. You need facts, conjecture, speculation. None of that reaches to, or suspicions or hunches, none of that reaches to the level of what a court's looking at, which is substantial evidence, substantial evidence in the record. As long as there's substantial evidence in the record, which means a court looks at it and says, a reasonable commission could have come to that conclusion based on this evidence. You know, it doesn't have to be, oh, it was 100% guaranteed they had to come to that conclusion, but weighing all the evidence, a reasonable person could have concluded that. That's what a court's looking at, and that's what you're looking for during the hearing process. So I talked about how you can't appeal a non-decision. So you can only appeal an actual decision of the CEO. And whether it rises to this level of a decision, an appealable decision, was really based on the particular facts and circumstances of each case. And I've got some material cited in my outline. There are some easy cases, and if the CEO grants a zoning permit or a certificate of zoning compliance, those are clearly appealable decisions. There's no question a decision's been made there. But sometimes it's more of an advisory opinion, and those are not appealable unless it's a clear definitive statement that has legal ramifications. It's not appealable. So the Holt case I cite here, there was a case where a property owner was buying a property, and they wanted to be sure that it would qualify for construction as a single-family home. And there was a letter in the file from the CEO said, yeah, assuming that you get your proper permits, you should be able to build on it. Well, that contemplated future action, right? It wasn't clear and definitive. You had to do other things. You had to file your proper permits. You had to file for a zoning permit. You had to file your building permits. You had to get your health department approvals. So an appeal was taken, and they said that you can't appeal from that letter. You can't appeal from that decision. It's just not an appealable decision, okay? It wasn't final yet. And then another thing, another case I cite is the Paquette case that came from Chester. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but that was in 2012. And that's poor little old lady buries her husband in the backyard and gets a notice that she's in violation of zoning. And she gets a letter from the CEO, and the letter from the CEO says, this is a violation. You can't do this. You know, you have to remedy this situation. Then ultimately, I believe, I'm not even looking at my notes. So here, I'm going off-script already, but I believe she appealed that. And while the appeal was pending, she appealed it to the ZBA, the order. While the appeal is pending, the CEO sent another letter, said, you know what? We're going to withdraw that notice and give you time to fix this. We're going to give you a little time to fix this. And then in the meantime, she brings her declaratory action to court and goes to court and says, no, I can have my husband back here, and it's not a problem. Well, guess what? That was a final decision. Even though there was no enforcement action, even though there was no immediate cease and desist, it was a final decision because it clearly stated from the CEO, this is in violation of zoning. You cannot do it. You have to get a variance or remedy the situation. And when he withdrew the order and gave them time to remedy the situation, I don't think they were trying to dupe her. I really, I think it was just, it was just a technical issue, and she withdrew her ZBA variance appeal. And then the court, when they heard it in court, they said, I'm sorry, we can't hear this now because your responsibility was to first challenge the decision, and that time to do so has now passed. You might have had a variance or maybe even an appeal pending, but you withdrew it, and so now you can't do it. So even without the cease and desist order there, and the firm directed that you're violating, you have to do this, you have to look carefully at the contents of those letters, and that will decide whether or not they're appealable. So the real question there is whether a decision has been rendered for purposes of an appeal, and it turns on whether the communication has a legal effect or consequence. So if it's simply advisory or posing a hypothetical, that is not. But if it's beyond that, then that is an appealable decision. An individual can appeal a decision, even if it's not from the CEO, but it has to be from somebody who is authorized to exercise the relevant authority. I cite a case in here where Walgreens tried to appeal a decision of a planning director. And ultimately, the court says you can't appeal that decision because the planning director wasn't charged with enforcing the regulations. But if you had an assistance zoning officer, if you had another officer in town that you delegated specifically enforcement of the regulations that wasn't the CEO, then you could appeal that too. There's a question, there's a little bit of ambiguity out there about whether or not someone can appeal to the ZBA if they get approval or denial of a lot line adjustment or a lot split map. Do you know what I'm talking about with a lot split map? Okay, I'm seeing a couple of shaking heads. No. So a lot split map is, if I want to, okay, so a subdivision. A subdivision is when you divide a parcel into three or more pieces of property. Okay, if you're only cutting it into two, that's what we sometimes call your free cut. That's a lot split map. That's just, you don't need subdivision approval. You can just split the property into two. So that's what I'm talking about when I talk about a lot split map. Or it could be a boundary line adjustment map where you have, let's say, three or four adjacent parcels. You just want to move the internal lot lines around, but you're still going to have the same number of parcels at the end, okay? You're just going to reconfigure a little bit. Sometimes when someone's trying to move their property lines around or try and get a free cut, if they were to get denied that lot split map, the question has arisen, well, then do they appeal to the ZBA? Or do they appeal directly to the court? So that really comes down, there's cases all over the place. There was a Superior Court case in 2014 that says when the planning director is reviewing that and saying, for planning purposes, oh, no, we think it is a subdivision. We think it needs to go there. That's a planning decision, not a zoning enforcement decision. That doesn't go to the ZBA. So there they said, go direct to court. However, there was a Supreme Court case in 2018 called Caddie versus the town of ZBA of Burlington. And there, they didn't really get into who, the court didn't address at all who to appeal it to, whether it should go to directly to court or to the ZBA, but it went to the ZBA, and it made its way all the way up to the Supreme Court, and they heard it. So no one clearly questioned whether or not they should have been appealing it to the ZBA. But then in 2020, there was an appellate court decision, 500 North Ave versus the town, the Planning Commission of the town of Stratford. Now, I say Planning Commission because that was an appeal of a Planning Commission decision, and that went directly to court. So see, we're all kind of all over the place here. So I can't give you real great guidance as to if Nate is acting on a lot split or a boundary line map, if there's a denial of it, where it should go. I personally think that's more of a planning function because you're talking about whether or not it's a subdivision, you're dividing land into multiple parcels. I guess if they're bringing in a map and they're saying, does this comply with zoning, these lot configurations? I think you're going to have to look at the facts and circumstances of it, and I would probably encourage you to talk to the town attorney if there's going to be a dispute about that so you can kind of figure out where that challenge should be heard.
Right, just, and just for Torrington context, when that come, when those come in, usually we don't, we don't have a formal application, so people will, we have them file, they come in to file the subdivision map, and we have them drop a copy off with us, and we review it. I haven't been around for an occasion where it didn't meet, you know, the subdivision requirements, but I don't believe that there's any like real formal notice that's provided. It's almost just like, yeah, this is fine, we'll take it, and you know. I don't know if there's an appealable notice that, I guess, I guess if you were to deny it, then they would ask.
I believe you, then you'd hear that.
Right, then they give us something to appeal, and we would, yeah, go that way. But yeah, usually it's not an issue because it's a free split. It's pretty.
So I guess I don't know how, it sounds like as a ZBA, you probably haven't seen much of those appeals. You're probably unlikely to see too many, but there has been some case law as precedent that they could make their way to you before they go to court. So that's a little bit with the, we can get into questions, you know, as we go, but that's a little bit about appeals from the CEO. Your second charge is to hear special exceptions. And as I mentioned, that's really just if your regulations provide, the zoning regulations provide the special exceptions or special permits. They're interchangeable, they're the same thing, requires approval by the ZBA. Torrington does not, so we're not going to spend a lot of time on that. If anyone has questions about it, see Mark, because he's on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He can tell you all about the special permit process. I'm going to skip right through now to variances. All right, so variance is probably what you see the most of, right? And they're challenging. I got to tell you, I've been practicing for almost 28 years, and my least favorite application to bring is a variance application. And that's because they're so darn hard to legally get. And when someone comes to me as a lawyer, I want to make sure legally you're entitled to this. I'm going to line you up and get all my ducks in a row so that I can get you your approval. But with variances, that's near impossible, okay? And as an aside, I'm going to tell you, there's been some talk and some bills proposed to the legislature to change 8-6 with regard to variances because it has become such an onerous requirement. As we go through it, you'll see why when I talk about hardship and how impossible is to find a real true hardship. So far, it hasn't gone anywhere, but for a couple of years, the Planning and Zoning section of the bar, together with the Home Builders Association, I think we even had some buy-in from the APA, the Connecticut Planners Association, and maybe even CASIO. I think they might have even bought into the concept of it, just making the statute workable. I mean, if the whole idea behind variances is to furnish elasticity in the regulations because one size doesn't fit all, you know, there's always exceptions to a rule. And sometimes, sometimes you need that elasticity because if you can't do something with your property, it could rise to the level of a confiscation or a taking. It could be taking away all valuable use of that property, and you need a relief valve there. So there is, there has been legislation to try and come up with a different standard just because through the court process, it's been interpreted to be so onerous. I don't know where it's going to go. I do expect the section to continue pushing for that. I don't know if it'll make headway in my lifetime or not, but stay tuned. Assuming everything stays as is, we're going to talk about the present requirements for variances. So as you know, variances can be granted by the ZBA. You can vary the application of the zoning regulations when you do so in harmony with their general purpose and intent and with due consideration for conserving the public, health, safety, welfare, and convenience and property values. And it can do it with respect to a parcel of land where owing to conditions specifically affecting that parcel and not affecting all of the land in general, not bending the rules, having a literal enforcement of the regulations would result in an exceptional difficulty or hardship. Now, the ZBA is the only board in town who can legally vary the zoning regulations. I know a lot of towns have a waiver provision in their zoning regulations. Technically, under the McKenzie case that came out in 2013, that's illegal, that's improper. There has been some refinement of that over the years where they say, well, if it's a, if it's a kind of a non-substantive standard, if it's a, you know, what you, your submission requirements are more of a procedural formality, they can waive that and say, well, not every variance application requires a full site plan or a traffic study or what have you. So there's been a little bit of bending the rules on that. There's been a little bit of talk about how perhaps if you build a very specific waiver provision into your zoning regulations that says you can waive it under these specific criteria, X, Y, and Z. For example, you don't need sidewalks if X, Y, and Z are met, but only under those specific criteria. Then there's been some arguments as to maybe that would be allowed. But just a general waiver provision in your regulations is kind of a no-no. And if you need to change the rules, you really have to go to the ZBA and seek a variance. Now, the variance allows something to be done that violates the zoning regulations. So because of that, it's really supposed to be exercised sparingly. It's supposed to be only in exceptional circumstances, and there's a ton of case law about that. And when you're granting a variance, you also have to still make sure it's in harmony with the regulation's general purpose and intent. There's two basic requirements for granting a variance. Number one, the variance must be shown not to affect substantially the comprehensive plan. Again, or is it in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulations? And number two, adherence to the strict letter of the regulation must be shown to cause an unusual hardship. We're going to spend a lot of time talking about that, but before we get to that, the first part of the test, the fact that it won't substantially affect the comprehensive plan, that is typically met if the variance is for a use that's allowed in other areas. So as long as it's allowed, the use allowed by the variance is consistent with other uses in the area, then it's typically allowed, and there's no effect on the comprehensive plan. Now, now we're going to talk about the unique hardship, and the unique hardship is kind of twofold. Number one, first, it's got to be unique, okay? It's got to be something that's peculiar and characteristic to the parcel of land that's before you. And it's a condition precedent to having any variance. You have to have that uniqueness. See. To constitute unusual hardship, again, it's unique to the land. It's different in kind from that generally affecting properties in the same zone. So we see this a lot with, let's say, undersized lots, okay? Let's say you have an old, not formally approved subdivision, but an old subdivision map of record. You have all these undersized lots, and they're all affected the same way. And none of them can meet the minimum lot area or the setbacks or what have you, and they're all vacant. So assume they're vacant because they're not, if they're already built on, then they're probably grandfathered. And then someone comes in and says, oh, you know, I have an undersized lot. I want a variance. Well, how is that unique? How is that different from all of these similarly affected other 50 lots shown on the map that might still be vacant? Or maybe, maybe half of the development's been built because they've merged some lots and done some things, and maybe the other half of the lots are still vacant. You still have a hard time showing that that's unique. It's got to be really an individualized thing. This is, you know, affecting just this property or very limited properties. So it's got to be, that's the first component. The second thing you need to know is that a hardship cannot just be economic. It can't be just financial in nature. There's an exception to that if it's so severely financial in nature that it depletes all economic productive value of the property. Then we get into a confiscation issue, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But if it's just because, oh, well, with the variance, I can do this, and my lot would be that much more beneficial, and I could sell it for $100,000, but without the variance, I have to build a much smaller house, and I can't do this and that. I can't have any outbuildings, what have you, and I can only sell it for $50,000. I'm sorry, that's not enough, okay? So economics, it's, you know, it's a fine line, and then there's few and far between, I think, where it hits the threshold where it's a big enough economic hit and decrease in financial value that it constitutes a confiscation and then is allowable. A hardship also is not based on the disappointment in the use by the property owner. So let's say someone has a personal desire to expand their house. Let's say they want to modernize the house. They want to put, you know, solar panels on, but now you've got a height violation, or they want to do something else just to update the house. It was an old seasonal house. They want to convert it and have it more modernized. Those do not arise to anything more than their convenience, their own wants and desires. That is certainly not a hardship for which a variance should be granted. You have to keep in mind that a variance is not a tool of convenience, but it's one of necessity. They're not granted when a reasonable use is already present or is plainly possible, but the owner just prefers otherwise, okay? It also can't be, I'm going to back up for a second. I say it can't be, okay? I'm telling you what the law is, and if you end up in court on appeal because, you know, someone's, you've got an unhappy neighbor or what have you, and they don't like the fact that you granted a variance, we all know half, if not more, of the variances that are granted out there probably don't rise to a traditional legal hardship. They're granted because it makes practical sense. No one seems opposed to it. It seems to make sense. Sure, what's the harm, right? It just, it just, there's a lot of reasons as to why this should be approved. That's not technically a variance. I'm not telling you that you can't do that. I'm telling you that most ZBAs grant variances that shouldn't be granted all the time. It's just the fact of the matter, because as I started off with, the test for really being able to get a variance is almost impossible to achieve. You probably have, would have no variances be able to be granted if they all had to really meet that test. So you are not the only board, if you do do that, that does that. Across the state, they do that, which is another reason why the Planning and Zoning section of the bar is saying, well, let's, let's make a law that actually coincides with what people are doing and what makes sense, right? I mean, this is how boards are acting. Why make the board do something illegal and bend the rules and grant these illegal variances just because it's the right thing to do? Let's give them authority to do it. Let's clean that up. Again, who knows if that will happen, but. Yep, let's say you have a corner lot. Well, that wouldn't be so unique because there's lots of corner lots. I'd say then you have two front yards, setbacks, okay? Let's say you have a corner lot that also has really steep slopes and maybe a utility easement along the back of it. So it's got a really limited buildable area, something like that. Let's say you've got a lot that's 90% wetlands. Some kind of characteristic of, let's say you've got a ton of ledge outcrop that's preventing you from using a significant proportion of it. So you have to push everything into the side yard or closer to the front yard than you might have to. Now, those are unique characters, something unique about the land. It's not enough, though, okay? So am I jumping ahead too far? Hold on a second. No, no, that's all right. I want to, I'm going to go like that with my notes because I want to get back to that, but while we're talking about, the uniqueness is not enough. It used to be, well, I can't even say it used to be because I think it was just a misapplication of case law for many years by the appellate court where they were upholding variances that were granted based on a unique characteristic. And there were, in my materials, there's cited a number of cases, Stillman versus ZBA, Jersey versus ZBA, Giarantano versus ZBA. These were all in the, I would say, 90s, maybe early 2000. A lot of ZBA cases that came out of the appellate court that said, okay, that's a unique characteristic. For example, in the Stillman case, they said there was a legal hardship that existed to support supet variant, a setback variance, to allow a house addition because the location of a well and septic system only allowed for the building in the setback, okay? So they said, okay, that's something unique. You're well and septic. You have to step back from that with your house. Well, you have to have the house in the setback. And they upheld it. So there's an appeal taken. ZBA upheld that variance. Well, then in 2015, the Supreme Court came out with a ruling in a case called E&amp;F Associates versus the ZBA of Fairfield. And they said, you need more than just a unique characteristic. You need that coupled with basically a complete loss or significant loss in all reasonable use of the property. Which is basically, in my mind, I'm sorry, I'm getting on my high horse here. That's basically a confiscation right there. If you're taking, who cares about a unique characteristic? They're really just, I think the Supreme Court is just saying, well, the only thing that's important now is it being a confiscation. There's no reasonable use of the property. Well, but we already had relief for that. So anyway, that's what they said. I'm not the one in charge. And so now in two thousand fifteen, that ENF case basically overruled all that appellate court precedent. That said, a unique characteristic alone is enough. So now you need that coupled with the fact that there's a showing that the property can't reasonably be developed. For another permitted use or that compliance will be confiscatory or arbitrary. Again, we already had that, but whatever. That's what they said in ENF. And I'll give you an example of how's that, how that's been interpreted since the ENF case came out. In Clayton versus the Westport ZBA, this was a, just a typical application now of that. And this is something that you might even see. So you have here a plaintiff who owns a nonconforming lot with a nonconforming house on it. And sought variances to increase the size of the home by adding one and a half stories to it on the existing foundation, so just going up. They claimed that the hardship was that there were two front yards, which is why they were the setback. And the property was burdened by an easement and steep slopes, so they couldn't build out, really they had to build up. Now, although the court found substantial evidence in the records to support the claimed unique hardships. The court went on to say that in light of ENF, that wasn't enough. They had to also find that there was no reasonable alternative use or a complete lack of, or taking a value of the property. And they said, since, since there was already a house there, there was value there. And they just wanted to now modernize it and expand it. That's personal convenience. So now those kinds of things technically are not testifiable variances. And so backing up a little bit. Let's see. So we'll talk about, we got right, kind of into confiscation. But I had said how economic hardship, financial hardship and loss isn't grounds typically for a variance. Unless it decreases the value so onerously and practically destroys its value. Constituting in effect a confiscation, which is a taking. Okay, so financial considerations are only relevant in those exceptional situations. Where they can, where the ZBA finds that the property is so greatly decreased in value. Or practically destroyed in value and it can't be put to any reasonable use. And then in those situations, in order to avoid a confiscation, you have the ability to grant a variance. I will tell you, they are very factual specific. There's absolutely no bright line rule. I can't tell you, okay, well, when you decrease it by seventy-five percent in value, that's enough. When you decrease it by ninety percent, that's enough. There's some cases in my materials. I'll let you review at your leisure. But it's still a very, very difficult level to achieve. I actually had a, I thought a slam dunk case in, in, where was I? In Stafford for a variance. And we wanted to build a house on a lot that didn't have the minimum buildable area. My client wanted to, not, not a builder. I say we because I identify with them. And, and the regulations, if you couldn't meet the buildable size, the minimum buildable area. You didn't have a building lot, so you couldn't use it as a building lot, so you couldn't put any structure on it. So then I went to the regulations. I'm like, well, what are the only other things you can do on it? You can't even use it for a farm because you can't put a structure to house the, the animals and protect the animals. And, and there was like no other, there was no other permitted use. And unfortunately, they still didn't want to grant my variance and, and we did appeal it. The judge didn't even agree with me, but I did get it on another lot, on, there were two lots involved in that one. And I had a somewhat similar argument and he gave it to me there. And I think he was basically splitting the baby sand here. You can build on one and not on the other one. But it's, it's a hard, it's a hard, very hard level to achieve.
What was the, like the use that they were saying, like what was the reasonable use that you did?
Oh, oh, God, you don't even want me to get into this. Because I've already now said the town that it's in, so I really don't want to get into it because it's going to, it, it made me lose my mind. Okay, they said, well, you can, you can harvest honey and you can have bees and harvest honey on it. Or you could grow mushrooms or you could hang a hammock and have a picnic. That's what they felt were other reasonable uses of the property. Yeah, so it was a disappointing one. Okay, but don't pass that along. I'm sorry I said the name of the town now. Um, so anyway, so it, it's all case specific, in fact, specific. Again, if there's a great enough decrease in value, then perhaps to avoid a confiscation claim, you can grant a variance. And that, and you're going to be the finders of fact, remember? So what convinces you it's a big enough decrease in value? There's some cases in here that talk about, well, as selling as a lot, the property was worth twenty-six thousand dollars. But they had evidence that a neighbor would buy it for eight. And they said, well, that's not a big enough decrease. You're still getting some value for it. Well, but what if you didn't have a neighbor who wanted to buy it? Or what if the neighbor said, oh, why would I want to buy it? I know you're not going to get your variance. I'll pay you five hundred for it. Well, maybe that, you know, do you have to make your applicant, your property, go and ask every neighbor if they want to buy it first and see what the offer is? That's what you're going to have to decide, okay? You guys are the finders of fact. You're going to have to decide if they've met their burden of proving that there's been a big enough decrease in value. And, and you guys will decide what they need to do to convince you. Yes. Building code's different. We can't get the. Yep. Right. There is, there's actually federal law that says if it's a reasonable accommodation, that's an exception to needing a hardship. It's also an exception to the rule that a variance runs with the land, has to be personal or unique to the land and not personal to the applicant. But if it's a reasonable accommodation in order to apply, comply with the ADA, for example. And you need a ramp or some accessibility, then, then you have to grant that. Even though typically it's, would require a hardship showing to say, well, why do you need to be in the setback area with that ramp? If it's purely a building code issue, the ZBA doesn't hear appeals. Having to do with building permits or modifying building code. But there is a specific building board of appeals that towns have, and that's where those appeals go to. But, but. Yeah, well, if it's a reason, yeah. If, if it's, if it needs to be code compliant for accessibility issues. I would counsel any commission, whether it's the ZBA or the historic district to grant it. Because I've got a case in here I'll find as we go through the materials. Where an accommodation, a reasonable accommodation was denied as a variance. They, the, the ZBA that it went before stuck to its guns and said, no, 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 this isn't a hardship and it's unique to you. So we can't grant you your variance. They didn't, the applicant didn't even appeal to the court, the denial. They went straight to federal court claiming a denial of reasonable access. That case settled, I don't know for what, but they got their, their variance. Their, or not, yeah, I guess they got their variance and they're right to put the reasonable accommodation in. It does, it does. However, again, when it's a reasonable accommodation, I believe there it can be personal to the applicant. That is the, that's a very limited exception when it can be limited to, I think, to a specific applicant. So if you have, let's say, someone else who doesn't need it. I, I don't think anyone's really policing that. Like I've never seen a situation where they move out and then someone moves in that like, oh, you have to rip that up. But. Remove the, the setback violation, you can always do that. And then if you want to do it again in the future, I would imagine they'll say, well, you abandoned it. You'll have to get a new variance.
I'll just say for Torrington, we have five foot setbacks for, for ramps and decks. Which is my understanding that the intent of that was to provide reasonable accommodation in and of itself. Just because it's such a small setback requirement and that's usually what we rely on. But I guess my understanding if the, for whatever reason, it rose to the occasion that it was impacting their only access to the house. We would still want to grant it, you know, as an ADA reasonable accommodation. But the, the five foot takes care of most situations.
And I've seen a number of other towns who work into their regulations either, sometimes even the setback doesn't apply to certain structures. Such as ADA accessible improvements. After a variance was obtained? Yeah, well, I mean, that gets into the whole discussion of expansion of a nonconforming use. So if you're, if you've got a structure within a setback, it's a nonconforming building, not so much a use. It's a nonconforming building and arguably technically you're, well, all regulations are different. The standard rule is you can't expand a nonconforming building without some type of approval. Some regulations say, well, with a special permit, the, the planning and zoning commission can review those on an individual basis and say, okay, well, we can allow for an enlargement. You know, we'll look at the specific details of it. And if you meet our special permit criteria, we'll allow for the enlargement of a nonconforming use. But if you don't have that in the zoning regulations and you're expanding a nonconforming use. The only way you could do that is with a variance and you might be hard pressed and proving a hardship in order to get that.
And we do have a, we have some parts in our regulation about expanding nonconformities for like the side or the re, I don't remember exactly which.
I love it when you run into those because again, anything that can help you avoid a variance is like my last resort if we need to get a variance.
We have a question from someone on, on Zoom, if you're taking that. Richard, I see you there. You can, you can unmute.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to point out that whoever's asking the question from, from off camera, it's very hard to hear online.
All right, thank, thank you, Richard. I'll, I have another mic that I had brought out for that specific purpose. But I'll leave it over here with these guys so that if they ask a question, they can use it. Thanks, Richard.
Sorry about that. Or I can also repeat the questions. What we were talking about a little bit was whether or not building relief could be granted via a variance. And specifically in the context of reasonable accommodations for like ramps and things like that. So if we're good with that, I'm moving on. And we're just going to talk a little bit about, as long as we're still on hardship. What is not also a hardship is a self-created hardship and you probably see a lot of those. The condition which results in the hardship cannot be due to one's own voluntary act. If that's the situation, the ZBA is without power to grant that variance. The hardship has to arise from circumstances beyond the applicant's control. And one type of voluntarily assumed hardship is the purchaser with knowledge. A purchaser of property is charged with knowledge of the zoning regulations. So if a purchaser acquires a property, assuming they have knowledge, even if they're ignorant of it. But assuming they have knowledge of the regulations and then later seeks to use the property in a manner prohibited by the regulations. They're barred from obtaining a variance. They had knowledge or were imputed to have knowledge of the fact that that regulation existed. However, there is a little bit of an exception here, a grayish area. If the hardship is created by the enactment of an, of an ordinance or a regulation. And the property owner at the time of the enactment of that regulation could have sought a variance. Then the subsequent owner of the property has the same legal right to seek that variance. Just because the prior owner sought, chose not to seek a variance, doesn't mean that they can't. I've got a case in here. It's called the Kulak versus the Stanford ZBA case. And here, there was the enactment of a zoning regulation establishing a minimum frontage after a lot was already created. And they said that was the hardship arising from the regulations. And they said it wasn't a self-created hardship, even though the applicant for the variance was aware of that nonconformity. You know, they're not the ones who owned it when the regulation went into fact. But because the lot was already in existence, then the regulations changed. They said, well, they didn't assume that knowledge because it was an after the fact change that made it noncompliant. So that purchaser could then, as the original property owner could, could go and then seek a variance. In the realm, in the world of self-created hardships, it's also important to note that. Even if the request for, or the reason for the variance was created by someone hired by the property owner or the applicant. That still is deemed a self-created hardship. There had been some law to the other interpretation that, well, if you hired someone and they were a contractor. Then perhaps it wouldn't be imputed to the owner. But, but the case law, the case law is fairly clear that if you have an architect, if you have a surveyor, you have a general contractor. Your builder, somebody who does something, puts the foundation, God forbid, in the wrong place or does something else. That's imputed to the property order and that's technically a self-created hardship. Now, that might be one of those ones that if it's no harm, no foul, you look at and you say, what are we going to do here? We're going to make them rip up the whole foundation. Maybe you're going to be granting it. You know, again, you wouldn't be the first to be doing that, but technically that's a self-created hardship. There is a limited exception to the hardship rule and that's called the Adolphson exception. And I love this one again because it gets you around the standard hardship requirement, which is near impossible to meet. So at least it gives me a fighting chance. And this is basically, it says, you don't have to prove hardship. If you have a completely independent basis for granting a variance. If you're showing that you're having a reduction in nonconformities, okay? So if there's an existing nonconformity and you're reducing nonconformities, you don't need a hardship. You can go to the commission, the board, the ZBA and say, okay, this is what I want to do. I want a variance. And I am now, I had, I had a house and I was, I was five feet from the front property line. And it's a fifteen foot side yard and I'm going to renovate the house. I'm going to take that front stoop out area and I'm going to do some other additions, but I'm going to only be ten feet from the property line. Okay, if you're reducing it and you're bringing it back, then there's an argument to be made that you're reducing a nonconformity. I guess it also involves whether or not, how much more you're putting in that ten foot side or front yard. But if you're reducing a nonconformity and you can establish that to the board, then that's an independent grounds for a variance. And, and the law is basically you're making it less offensive. But what's less offensive, right? I mean, I guess that's in the eye of the beholder. In my opinion, and I think this is the correct one. It's what's less offensive from the, with regard to the regulations. Not what's less offensive to my neighbor, but what's less offensive with regard to the regulations. Is it more compliant? I've got a case, it was the West Haven ZBA, Oseo versus the West Haven ZBA. It was in two thousand twenty-one. And here the court overturned a setback variance. The regulations required a hundred foot setback between a gas station and a residential lot. Okay, they overturned a setback variance that was granted on the grounds that it would replace a nonconforming use. Which was an industrial bakery with a permitted use in the zone, which was the gas station. The court, though, found, based mostly on complaints by neighbors, that the gas station was not really less offensive. Even though it was a commercial use in a commercial zone, it was not less offensive than an industrial bakery in the commercial zone. Because all the neighbors didn't like it and they thought that it was going to be more offensive. So there was also another one, this was a funny one, Old Saybrook versus ZBA. Or the Nordstrom versus the Old Saybrook ZBA in two thousand twenty-two. Where the court overturned variances that would have decreased the nonconformity of the building by making the structure, structure comply. More closely with the required setback on the finding that the use was really not less offensive to the neighbors. Because the proposed second story addition would have had views into the neighbor's home and therefore offend their privacy. Again, they're talking about less offensive in the context of the neighbors, not so much less offensive in the context of the regulations. Those were both superior court decisions. I don't know what one of the upper courts would have done with it. But just know that's out there. It's an opportunity to review an application and perhaps grant a variance where you might otherwise have a typical traditional hardship. And maybe make a property a little more conforming in the process. I don't know if you've ever heard the term de minimis variance thrown out there. Someone might come in before you and say, oh, we're looking, asking for a two. Someone might come in before you and say, oh, we're looking, asking for a two-foot change in the side yard. It's so nominal, you know, what's the harm? Technically, you still need to prove the same exact standard for hardship. There's no de minimis exception in Connecticut to the law for hardships for variances. We talked a little bit about this already when we talked about the ADA compliance, but variances should be based on the condition of the land, not the identity of the property owner. It runs with the land and it's not personal. But again, we talked about that limited federal law has added the exception that it can't be personal by saying that reasonable accommodations under the FHA or the ADA are required to be made. See, and I think I know to just be very careful if you don't grant a reasonable accommodation, because again, in Wallingford, that's where it was, where they didn't even bother appealing the denial of the variance. They just went straight to federal court and sued for, under crow, for a violation of state and federal law, including the FHA and ADA. And that ended up settling after, which is an indication that it was probably going to be, could have been found in favor of the applicant because the court had just denied a motion for summary judgment on the issue of intentional discrimination and the failure to accommodate claims. So I'm sure at that point, the town said, uh-oh, we got to get, we got to make this go away. So that was the reason for the settlement. The law does provide you an A to seven that when you're acting on a variance, you have to state upon the record, the reasons for your decision, the regulation varied and the description of the hardship. I know most boards that I appear in front of try and do that. Sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle. It's good to do it. More often than not, I think a court would probably search the record for a reason to support the variance. But there have been cases that have remanded it and sent them back to do it again. So I hate to see a decision get overturned on a technical flaw. So just try and dot your i's and cross your t's and make sure you get that into the record. You do, even though it's not expressly allowed and authorized in statute, the cases have said that you do have the right to put reasonable conditions on your variances. And really, that's because since the law basically says allowing a variance is a use that's forbidden otherwise by the regulation, the attachment of conditions really can alleviate some of the harm that might foul. And it could, if it weren't for the conditions, how can you maybe find that it's consistent with the neighborhood or in keeping with the overall plan? The conditions don't need to be expressly stated in the certificate of variance. There's some case law out there that says that they can also be found just in the record. But it's always best, again, to put them right in the certificate of variance because digging through the record, having to come back and find it years later could be onerous. It could be forgotten. So try and put them in the certificate if possible. How are we doing on time? Okay. The regulations, the zoning regulations can limit the ability of you to grant use variances. So lots of towns do do that. They say you can do setback variances, bulk area variances, things like that, but not use variances in certain zones or maybe in any zone. That's allowable if it's in the zoning regulations. If you have an application that comes before you and you deny it, you do not have to hear that application again for six months. That's in statute, but that's at your discretion. If you choose to hear it again, you can. But keep in mind now, and I don't have this in my materials, but then it gets a little bit into the law of prior similar applications and can you reverse yourself? The only way you could really reverse yourself if you did the first denial is if there's something significantly different. If there's been some change in the plan or the request that's come before you. If it's the exact same application, you know, what's the basis for reversing yourself? Okay. All right. We're going to talk very, very, very briefly about location approvals because as Nate mentioned, location approvals for dealers and repairers now no longer come to the ZBA. Those now go just to the zoning enforcement officer to sign off on. And that was a change that was effective this past July, 2023. However, you do still occasionally get applications for a motor vehicle recyclers yard or a gas station. Now, in 2003, both of those statutes that require those location approvals were changed and they eliminated the requirement or the criteria, the review criteria, right? So now you, what do you review? I guess you have to decide what you want to review. And it also eliminated the public hearing requirement. You can still elect to have one if you want, but you're not required to. So all I would do is say, there's no specific statutory review criteria for what's suitable. You know, is it a suitable location? You have the ability to decide that in your own discretion. You know the area, you know what surrounding uses are. You evaluate those facts and circumstances as you deem relevant and you make a decision as to whether or not it's suitable. But it still requires an individualized assessment. It's not just a rubber stamp and allow it just because it's an allowable use. You still have to make sure it's appropriate in that specific location.
And for clarification, in Torrington, I believe planning and zoning here is location approvals for gas stations. It's written into our regulation.
Okay, I think the statutes say, let's just see. They have to be obtained from the local authority. And must be obtained from zoning commission, plannings and zoning commission or the local authority. And local authority in towns that have both a zoning commission and a board of appeals means the board of appeals.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
So I might just check.
Look into that regulation.
Yeah, maybe you are.
Maybe to clarify, I know we had one in the past, but it wasn't strictly a gas station, it was a convenience store.
Okay.
Kind of attached to it.
I mean, clearly the zoning commission is going to be reviewing a special exception or special permit if you need it and the site plan for it. I think for the actual location approval, that still has to go to the ZBA. And I wouldn't be surprised if that's a holdover because these statutes have changed so many times. They have bounced back and forth. It was the zoning commission, then it was the ZBA. Then now for, for the recyclers yards, it's not even either of them anymore. It's the ZEO. So I wouldn't be surprised if maybe that was compliant at one point and then the statute just changed and now it's ZBA. But you might want to just check that.
The way it reads is that it can be planning and zoning if the ZBA doesn't exist and planning and zoning is doing, taking ZBA's role essentially? Is that?
Well, if there's a, I mean, I'm just reading from the statute right here and I just have an excerpt in my outline. It says, section, I'll give you the section so you could check it. Section 14-318, sub paragraph four, provides that in any town or city having a zoning commission and a board of appeals, the local authority means the board of appeals. So since most towns have a zoning commission, that would most likely be the ZBA now.
All right, okay.
Okay, so maybe just check into that.
Yep, thank you.
We're just going to touch on a couple of procedural things. I have a section in here about taking an appeal from a decision of the ZBA. You guys probably don't care about that. You care more about not having an appeal taken if your orders, right? So I'm not going to go really through the technicalities of taking an appeal. And if an appeal is taken, I know your ZEO would work closely with the town attorney. I think one thing that I do want to touch on is in order to avoid an appeal, and this isn't a ZBA-specific case, but I want to touch on it. The idea of fundamental fairness, and this applies to any public hearing. So this applies to, you know, how all boards and commissions hold their hearing. And fundamental fairness isn't really strict due process, but they're kind of used interchangeably. And fundamental fairness is the idea that an applicant coming before a board has a right to an unbiased board. They're going to listen with an open mind. Everyone comes in with a little bit of opinion and preconceived notions, but they're going to sit and they're going to listen and they haven't predetermined and made up their mind yet. They're going to give everyone a fair and full opportunity to be heard and then make an individual assessment. So that's really the idea behind fundamental fairness. And, and when I was doing my case law update for the planners and the ZEO this past year, I came across a case that I just have to share with you because there's some language in it that I just love. And it's about fundamental fairness. It came from the, it's Taylor versus the Westport Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a appellate court case from April of 2023. And there, they had an application that went before the PCC that town staff informed the applicant that they, they thought it was an incomplete application and they requested the plaintiff to consent to an extension. The plaintiff said, no, I don't think it's incomplete. I think it's complete and we want to move forward with it. The question was whether or not the site plan changed and they needed any new variances and if they needed another architectural review of it. They said, no, we think it's pretty much close enough to what we had reviewed previously that we don't need any new. So that was their claim for why it wasn't incomplete. So the staff shared its memo regarding the outstanding issues with the PCC prior to the hearing. In response, the day before the hearing, the plaintiff said the applicant sent a memo saying, here's why I don't think it's incomplete. And by the way, here's this additional material just because you're asking for it. So the day before the hearing submits all this additional material. And on the day of the hearing, staff gives a memo to the commission and says, we just got this stuff yesterday, I haven't had a chance to review it all. So we're asking them again to extend or withdraw their application and refile. They must have been out of extension times. So the applicant, first, the chairman expressed extreme displeasure. I'm sure we've all been there, right? Extreme displeasure and having received information that day before the hearing. When the applicant then said, well, I want to address the issue of the completeness of the application. The chairman cut him off and said, no, no, we already heard from our staff. They say it's incomplete, that's it. They closed the hearing. Subsequently, during deliberations, the members of the board were very unhappy with how the plaintiff treated the application and said, oh, the applicant gave the staff holy hell. They referred to the application as a shit show. And they said it was just a complete cluster and I won't say the rest. But this was all in the opinion. And I can't tell you how many times I've been sitting there. What a shit show this has become, you know? But so it just cracked me up and I had to share that. But the reason I'm really telling you about it is because when the applicant took their appeal of the denial, the court said, that is fundamentally unfair. And by the way, it demonstrates clear bias and prejudice on behalf of the commission. So when they remanded it, it was with the warning that a number of these members might want to consider recusing themselves because they're not sure if they could sit and act impartially on it. So I guess it's just important to know, even if you potentially have an incomplete application, you have to let the applicant be heard on it because the court won't have a record in order to review, review it. They won't know why you thought it was incomplete and why they thought it was complete and they can't make a decision. So, so barrier hearings mean just be temperate with your remarks. I know sometimes applicants and certain ones can really just rub you the wrong way and feel they're taking advantage and pushing you, but try and stay calm and just, and you know, hold your tongue if at all possible. So let me just see where we're at here. Something that's important for you guys to know is the automatic approval doctrine, which is approval by operation of law does not happen if you don't meet the timeframes in the statute. So that won't happen either with an appeal from a ZEO order. It won't happen with a variance. So if you run out of time, you know, if you can convince the applicant to withdraw and resubmit, that's great. But if they won't and, and you know, I would say, and I would, I would tell you, go over the timeframe. There's not going to be an automatic approval and you don't want to necessarily, you know, deny it at that point because you've got some time invested in it. And unless you really see it's not compliant and if the writing's on the wall, you can go ahead and deny it anytime you want. But if you think they're close and they're running out of time, don't worry about the automatic approval. If there is an appeal of a ZEO order coupled with a variance, so they kind of, it's a belt and suspenders. They say, okay, I think the ZEO is wrong, so I'm going to appeal this order. But just in case you disagree with me, here's my variance request. I want to do this. You have to hear the ZEO appeal first because that might negate the reason for the variance. Okay, so that's just an ordering process you have to make sure you do. And let's see. You know that you need a quorum. I assume you guys know the basics of a running meeting. You need a quorum to act. They have to be a quorum of disqualified or qualified members. You're disqualified if you have a conflict of interest, but it's up to you as the member to decide if you want to recuse yourself. You can't have an applicant come before you and say, you, you have a conflict of interest. You cannot sit on this application. No, they can raise their question for the record, but you as the member have the ultimate decision to make as to whether or not you can sit and objectively review that or whether or not you have a technical conflict.
If you're going to recuse yourself on any board, what's your recommendation?
Get out.
Thank you.
Yes, please. If you're going to recuse yourself, I would at least remove myself from the table. I would not even just go sit in the back of the room unless there's other business that you're trying to stick around for. But even so, the last thing you want to do is be making eyes at people, rolling your eyes.
Municipalities and so forth, different meetings that take place, they recuse, they get back up, you know, on the other side of the desk and okay, approved, disapproved.
Yeah. Yeah, my recommendation would always be if you're going to recuse yourself, it's not just for during the hearing, it's during deliberations. You don't make, you don't even ask a procedural question. And my recommendation would be to leave the room.
Question on architectural review that you had mentioned earlier. What weight does an architectural review board actually carry?
Well, that really depends on your local regulations.
Recommendation only.
Yeah, yeah. And most regulations are like that. I mean, I'm not aware of any statute that says you have to have, you know, on certain projects, an architectural review. That's usually based on town-wide regulation or ordinance saying it's an advisory board. And as an advisory board, the board with jurisdiction and authority, which is probably going to be the Planning and Zoning Commission in most instances, can choose to do what they will with that. They can accept the recommendations or they can override.
And that's exactly what it is, a recommendation, correct?
In most circumstances.
Speaking as the chairman of the Architectural Review Committee, we are an advisory panel that we were set up many years ago and we actually uphold the guidelines for renovations to commercial buildings at the previous Marty Connor. We put a booklet together that outlined standards that the city of Torrington would prefer when you come in with your plans. And we've used them successfully for, gosh, I don't know, 15, a long time, but advisory. But we've gotten a good reputation of working with and have actually had some wonderful suggestions. So if anything, our influence is just the track record of having good ideas, but definitely it's advisory.
And most, excuse me, most towns that I've worked in, I haven't seen a regulation where it makes it a mandatory approval prior to getting to the PCC.
Unfortunately.
Let's see. I'm not going to get into the weeds with conflict of interest. Again, you make the ultimate determination on that. The one thing I'm going to just make a quick note on is we talk a lot about four of five votes you need when you're acting as a ZBA. That's in all instances except location approvals. So you just need a simple majority of three. Okay. And, you know, I think that's kind of the bulk of what I wanted to cover in my materials. If anyone has, I know we've gone a little past time, but if you have some questions that you want to run by me, I will do my best to answer them. I'm saying that again, why don't you take the microphone so people can?
So just on the recusing thing, let's say you're number five. Like there's only five people that showed up that night. And by recusing yourself, you're stopping the application from going forward.
Well, if you feel that you should recuse yourself, then you should. And then if I am the applicant, what I would be saying is please see an alternate. And if there are no alternates available, I'd be talking close to my client and saying, you might want to grant an extension so that there can be a full complement. They can get an alternate here next meeting to be seated. You know, you have some extension time in order. Well, you have 35 days to close the hearing, so you, you don't even have to act that night. And then if need be, you can use extension time. But I would, I, you know, if someone, first of all, if someone raises the issue of bias and there's, you know, you might be a little offended by it, right? And say, no, I know I can sit impartially, but, but if the perception is there, what's the harm? Because the risk is if you don't recuse yourself and then there's an appeal taken, the court could invalidate that action. So, you know, I guess you have to see how strongly you feel about the conflict issue and continuing to sit versus recusal. But most instances, the perception, you want public confidence in your boards. So in most instances, I'd probably defer and err on the side of recusal.
So now I was just saying, if, if there's only five of us on the board and you and I have an issue and I recuse myself, in my view, I could be like, well, I'm kind of doing the F you to you by just stopping your application. So that's why I'm like, are you a rock in a hard place at that point? Or is it the better just to step away? Yeah. No, no. No, 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 I'm just saying, it's just what I just said, is there's five people. I recuse myself, but to you, it looks like I'm stopping your application. Because again, like she was just discussing, it's about how it looks. So if you come in and you're like, oh, Brooke, you're a big, mm, and I recuse myself, then I can almost look like I'm being mean to you. then I can almost look like I'm being mean to you by stopping your application that evening. That's what my question was.
But it's best, if you're going to recuse yourself, it's best to do it at the very beginning of the hearing as it opens. And if an applicant has a question about it, you know, typically they would raise that at the beginning of the hearing as well. Unless it's something that comes out through the process at the public hearing, then they can, they can raise it at any time. But typically, that's something that would be done right up front at the beginning of the hearing. And then the applicant can make the decision about whether or not they want to continue if there's no alternate to be seated.
You know, in running the meeting, it's important to say Johnny's a seated member this evening, Sally's a seated member.
Right.
You know, up front.
When you do your roll call at the beginning and open the hearing, here's who will be seated on, on this application. Because it could change from application to, I mean, if you have a vacancy to fill, you might fill someone for one hearing and someone for another, just so you can give your app, your alternates, you know, equal time.
That's right.
Yeah.
Do we have any more questions? Any questions from our members at home? None. Dory, it was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much. I hope you all got some good information. I will forward the correct outline to Nate tomorrow and he can share that with you all. And if there's anything else that can help you with, please feel free to ask me. But I would always also urge you on anything controversial to make sure you get your town attorney involved on the early side.
Oh, we're very conscious of those things here, that's for sure.
Good.
Well, Attorney Family Guy, thank you very much for being our guest tonight.
Thank you.
And may I have a motion to adjourn from the members?
Bozen, do you adjourn?
Thank you a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir, and all in favor and good night and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Yep. Job. You know what's funny, when she's talking about the setback stuff? I had this James Street, one of my houses on James Street was an old grocery store.